All right, welcome everyone. I'm Richie Ratzak, the Assistant Managing Editor at The Record Journal. Here today for the Meriden City Council Candidate Forum for Area Three. Joined today by Republican Party incumbent Dan Brunet and Democratic Party challenger Vanessa Hutchins. The format for the forum tonight will be each candidate will get a one-minute opening statement, and then we'll ask a series of questions. Both candidates will get one minute to respond and we'll alternate who answers first. I can give additional time at my discretion if we need to go longer on certain topics. Questions for the forum came from the newsroom and from our Voices Initiative, where we asked voters what they want the candidates to be talking about as they compete for their votes. You can submit questions for upcoming candidate forums by going to myrecordjournal.com/voices. For those watching live on Facebook, I'll also be keeping an eye on the comments. So if you have a question for the candidates, leave it in the comment section and we'll try to get to them as time allows. So then we'll kick it off with the opening statements and we'll head over to Dan Brunet first.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Dan Brunet, your Area Three City Counselor and Minority Leader in my city leadership role. I've served three terms, seeking reelection on November 2nd. I truly thank all those that have put their faith in me with their vote over the years. I will continue to have priorities of infrastructure improvements, quality of life issues, economic development, and spending issues. I'll be bringing sound, unencumbered judgment and reason to city matters, and I will always continue that on my watch. Thank you.
All right, and then over to Vanessa.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Vanessa Dill Hutchins. I'm a wife and mother and a 25-year veteran educator. My husband and I made Meriden our home almost 20 years ago. And during that time, I've served on local boards in the city. Most recently, the Meriden Human Rights Advisory Board, where I was co-chair. And for the last 15 years, I have been a member of the Meriden Democratic Town Committee, where I assisted many candidates in their campaign. So when the opportunity in Area Three arose, I decided to kind of step up to the plate. And so, you know, I'm just a willing worker. I think that I will bring to the city some fresh ideas and I have a commitment in serving the Meriden community.
And from here, we started asking questions and I'll turn it over to Record Journal reporter Mike Gagné.
And who am I directing my first question to?
So since Dan Brunet had the opening statement first, the first question would go to Vanessa.
Vanessa, so in this upcoming council term, if you are elected, what will be your priorities?
Well, again, as I said in my opening statement, you know, I would be there to serve the residents of the city. You know, I do understand that I'm a novice and I have a lot to learn, you know, I, you know, I do understand that. But I am willing to go listen what the concerns are and learn from some of the best who have served on the committee for quite some time.
And then over to Dan.
Yeah, I hope to continue many of the efforts that we have going on within the city, some of the economic development, some of the growth that we've had on the east side of town. Continue with being a big part of the checks and balances that are part of healthy government. I work well, well, you know, with Democrat leadership. We have open discussion and leadership meetings. And that's what I want to do. I'm big about spending, making sure we have, you know, a police force that's well-suited, well-versed, active in the community. We've really done a lot with downtown as far as the green. We have set up many incentives, I think, that are extremely important going forward. I want to see that through. I want to see a lot of things that have taken place. Have them all go through within the next four years too. So that's what I want to do is really just kind of go further what we have accomplished as a city and as a group, as a team. Thank you.
And one item, this is directed to you, Dan. So one item that we anticipate the council will be taking up in the next term is the recommendation from Public Safety Committee that a civilian review board be formed to review police use of force incidents. If this item were to come before you, how would you vote? And please explain your rationale.
Okay, yeah, yes, I was attending Use of Force Committee meetings for the past year, or the past seven months, while the issue is about creating a citizen review. Yeah, I reviewed much of the supplied data, which was tremendous. What we had is a final report, it was quite extensive. And I think creating a CRB is unnecessary and may create unintended consequences. The city council's Public Safety Committee should be better used for issues such as this. And we have a legal and court system that can take care of any really egregious acts. We'd probably be on the scope of what a citizen review for would possibly do. So clearly, I will be voting no on this issue going forward. That's the reasoning. I think I clearly said why we shouldn't, where it should go, and how it should work. So hopefully, other individuals think in a similar fashion. I'm not quite sure how some of my colleagues go, but I know my minority caucus all think the same way. Thank you.
And Vanessa, over to you.
Well, you know, I will tell you, although I am eager to learn more about the background of the CRB, and I can't really give you a definitive answer at this moment. I can tell you that, you know, when elected, I would like to converse first with the police chief, Chief Rosado, as well as the local citizens to get more information so that I can make more of an informed decision when voting. Thank you.
Vanessa, this question is directed to you. So another public safety item that's come to the public's attention in the past year is staffing shortages at the city's emergency communication center. According to officials, city officials, when the center is fully staffed, it employed at least 12 full-time dispatchers. And as of mid-September, the center had six full-time dispatchers with other public safety personnel, including the fire department, covering dispatcher shifts. What role can the city council play in addressing the ongoing staffing shortage of dispatchers?
Well, first of all, I think that there's definitely a need, you know, public safety is important. You know, I had an incident at my home where I had to call the EMT. God forbid if something happened and no one was there to pick up the phone. So, you know, it is very important. I'm in support of finding monies in the budget wherever so that staffing can indeed be increased. Thank you.
Dan, over to you.
Well, I say one of the most frustrating parts is, you know, we do have money in the budget for it. They are allocated for a force of about 16 individuals there. They're having just a difficult time in staffing, maintaining personnel. And I think we've done well recently. We're trying to give directives, make an accountability for the director of emergency services, having regular meetings through the city manager with leadership, with improvements, expectations, ECDs, expected, you know, completion dates, things of that nature. So I think things are going to get better. They had a really tough time. There are certain individuals in there that they thought weren't working well as a team. And that had a factor in some of the trainings that were taking place. And some of the people, they were just simply bailing out before their probationary period ended.
And Dan, this next question starts with you. Where should the city be focusing its economic development efforts?
Right now, I think in all reuse of older buildings, reuse of buildings, reuse of factories. There's a lot of opportunity for smaller, smaller companies. Even the other night, we're talking about cannabis. I mean, there's a great opportunity to have a couple cannabis-growing facilities, not retailers. That's a whole nother topic that we may talk about later. But that's where the focus should be, I think, as far as the East Main Street corridor. It's really starting to get built up just in the past year. When you look at what we've done with Tano's, Sunbad Plaza across the street, we've filled the Lowe's area. We've got the pads starting to get built up down on Kevin Curry's properties with Popeyes coming in. And of course, we're the fast food chain empire over there. Everything and anything you want is there. And hopefully, they stay and they maintain. It's been a lot of growth. Research Parkway, we're going to be focusing on next. It's another one with the reuse opportunities.
And Vanessa, would you like to offer a response?
Surely, you know, overall beautification efforts throughout the city, not just on one particular side. But I have to say, a lot of strides have been made on the east side of Meriden, which is fantastic. But I think we need to kind of focus on the west side of Meriden. There's so much room for improvement on that side. You know, I've seen some local mom and pop shops open up, some local restaurants, and I think it's fantastic. And I like to support those businesses. But there's definitely room for improvement. So I think, you know, focusing more on the west side and let's see what happens.
Thank you. So this next question, we'll start with you, Vanessa. It's kind of followed up actually briefly on Dan, something simply that Dan alluded to. So it can be difficult to strike a balance between economic development and environmental protections. So we're wondering if you can explain your own views on open space acquisition. In your view, what is the right balance between encouraging development versus conservation of open space?
Well, well, let's see, conservation. Let me think about that for a second, you know. I think, well, first of all, the environment is, first and foremost, very, very important. Surely, you know, when building, I think those are some of the things that have to be taken into consideration. But, you know, for the most part, I think, don't think really kind of go hand in hand, you know, before you make a decision like that. Let's say, you know, Meriden has beautiful parks. Okay, that was one of the first things that my husband and I noticed when we moved here to the city, Hubbard Park, going up the Castle Craig. You know, I wouldn't want any kind of development, you know, in that area to disturb that beauty.
And Dan, would you like to respond?
Oh, yeah, I do. We do a lot as far as, you know, open spacings, that nature. You have to realize, we have the most parkland of acreage of any community, entire city. When you start looking at Chapparita Park, the acreage there, Hubbard Park, we have 14 other pocket parks throughout the city. A lot of people, unless you're a little, say, at the plan of conservation and development, see what we actually have. I mean, we do a great job. We've done density reduction in a lot of areas over the past 10, 15 years, and I think that's part of it. And you go down Lewis Avenue, you see those little pieces of land that are empty. That was all part of a program to knock the building down, make it a green space. So it makes it much more better for the neighborhood, better for the city. And, you know, we always know that density is not conducive to a good, you know, environment. So those are some of the things we are doing, and I think we're going to continue.
Okay, Dan, you're starting this next question. So one thing that Meriden School officials have said over the years regarding funding of public education is that the school system has been flat-funded over the past decade. And so we're hoping that you can explain your views on funding public education. Would you support funding increases for a school system?
Well, first of all, it's a complete misnomer that they haven't had additional funding on an annual basis. The city per se did not give additional funding, but they did get funding on a state level. And when they get money on a state level, because we're a city that's considered in distress to somewhat, we have lower incomes. So they've always had more money. They've always gotten 2% and 3% more a year. But we've been fortunate that they changed the funding from the state level. So it's not true that, you know, we didn't give additional money per se. We didn't do it as a group because they did get additional money from the state side. And that's the concept that sometimes people have a hard time digesting. And there's a reason why we had gotten more money from the state. So flat funding is not true because they did get $3 million additional dollars one year. Last year, I think we pitched it about $600,000, just, you know, for whatever reasons. We did do $600,000. It wasn't flat, flat funded. But that's the reason. They're getting additional funding for the state because we're a city in distress and we don't want to raise taxes on our residents. So that's what we need to understand.
Vanessa, do you have a response?
Sure, you know, as an educator, funding really is a priority. That would be my priority and it speaks to his values. But you know what? I understand that we are below the state average for municipal funding. And we owe our students the same funding as other cities in Connecticut. For me personally, working for the state of Connecticut Technical High School System. I'll give you an example. We had an edge insofar as remote learning because we give all of our students a Chromebook when they enter as the freshmen. So we didn't have any issues with remote learning. But then other cities and, you know, municipalities in Connecticut didn't have that, you know, immediate option. And they kind of scrambled around to help these children find means of learning online. So yes, funding is absolutely on the top of my list for Board of Ed.
Richie, real quick, before I ask next question, do we have any questions from the public that we'd like to intersperse?
There have been a couple of comments about taxes and wanting to ask point blank, would you support tax increases?
Would you like to take that question on? So we'll start with Vanessa.
No one likes taxes. No one wants increases in taxes, you know. I would not support, you know, an increase in taxes at this time, you know. I mean, lately, there hasn't been any mill increases in three years, so no.
And Dan, you're next.
Yeah, of course, taxes. I mean, it's all about spending. I'll tell you, we have to work on the spending side of issues. I know this year, we've had three and four positions that I was against that I thought were unnecessary that we worked on in the past 10 years, you know, to bring down and rein it in. The taxes that we had are 0% increases. We hear this and that. But it was based on one year, we had gotten ever-source money, like $2 million there. And there was other reasons why. I was looking on the spending side rather than simply that there's no tax increase. We put in three and four amendments trying to get a tax reduction this past year. All were shot down. All were valid. So not just necessarily tax increase, but we could have had a tax reduction last year with three. Not a big one, but something that would be symbolic, something that I think the public can grab on to.
All right, on the topic of funding, as you likely well know, the city Americans receiving more than $36 million in federal funds through the American Rescue Plan Act, sponsored COVID-19 pandemic. Those funds have stipulations attached. They must be used in one of five categories. Supporting public health expenditures, addressing negative impacts caused by public health emergency, investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers, and replacing lost public sector revenue. The city does have a committee that is tasked with reviewing applications for proposed projects and initiatives that could be funded through ARP funds. And so what types of initiatives would you prioritize if they were brought to the council?
I believe this goes to Dan first.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's kind of an interesting process. I've attended the initial meetings. I have Mike Carabette as the vice chairman on there now, so 10, he's a vocal person on there. We've had, let's count about 25 different applications. I think a lot of focus wants to be on some public safety initiatives. One of them, we have for the library, something that will help them. I think I'd be in favor of that. Something that would help the reduction of the cost of the overall project and mostly the public safety. And a lot of the applications are so peripheral and really not COVID-related. It's hard to grab on to what this money was actually for because it's not, everything was kind of paid for through other funding. This is probably the third incarnation of money that's come through based on COVID. And it's turned into one of the biggest port barrel spending projects in the nation, is what the bottom line would be. But we'll focus on the public safety end.
And Vanessa, your response?
Yeah, gee, you're asking a woman to spend money. I would like, I'm thinking so many things, number one, you know, don't forget we're still in a pandemic. COVID funding, I think money should go more towards COVID. I also think that we'd like to find ways to help our senior citizens here in Meriden build a better infrastructure. And also, oh, definitely, again, educator, support our local library as well.
Okay, this next question, well, we'll start with you, Vanessa. So last month, the city council approved a cap on the number of recreational cannabis dispensaries that would be permitted in the city at three such dispensaries. Dan Brunet was among the counselors who voted against that measure. So we're wondering if you can share your views on recreational marijuana, now that it's legal in Connecticut, and how to regulate the establishment, sell those products. Do you agree with the local regulations that the council approved last month?
Well, you know, I'm still kind of considering the views on that. And I like to investigate more, you know, about the impact in Meriden. I just would imagine that any type of recreational drug use, usage is going to be mandated by, you know, the state, you know, federal drug administration and what have you. So, you know, at this time, you know, I prefer not to render a decision until I look into it further.
And Dan, your response?
Yeah, I did. I voted against the project. Obviously, it kind of circles back to the location. Earlier on, part of that resolution was having an overlay district. An overlay district allows a city to be able to put it in specific areas, which would make sense to me. But what they did was the Democrats voted for it to be in any commercial district. So here you go, you have an application downtown. Some of the Democrats are the leading opponents of it, but they all voted against a resolution that I had that would have gave total control. I don't know if they just voted that way because I came up with it or because otherwise. But I think that fires remorse on that one, and we may need to revisit it. Because that's what allowed something to go directly downtown, direct next to a police station next to a Board of Ed building. We have an overlay district that would not be taking place right now, and that's what that was about.
Richie, do we have any additional questions coming in front of the public?
Out of this time.
Okay, so Dan, I was going to start with you on this next question. What is your assessment of the city's handling of the COVID-19 pandemic locally? How has the city performed in the areas of providing access to public health as well as access to city government during the pandemic? In your view, has the city struck an appropriate balance between managing a public health crisis and ensuring that residents are able to access their city government service?
Boy, there's two schools of thought to that. First of all, I think the mayor, city manager, Leah Crowner Health Director did an outstanding job as far as, you know, everything that took place originally, made some sound decisions on what needed to take place. I've been an open about having public meetings, per se, and in this council chambers, and I'm sitting here right now. But, you know, some of the council thought otherwise. I think the balance is good enough, I will say that. But I still would like to see live meetings. I think there's a bit of overkill going on right now, especially when you're out in the public. There's stadiums with 70,000, 80,000 turn on college football every, any Saturday. Places are packed. I was at a comedy club last Saturday night. Place was filled. Nobody had masks. I come into City Hall, all of a sudden, I'm like in the incubus. But, you know, it's like two separate worlds going on. So right now, things should be loosened up, in my opinion, in regards to some of the things taken on in City Hall, especially when we all have masks on. Are you really? Come on.
Vanessa, your response?
Well, you know, I understand what Mr. Brunet says about masks, you know, that's another issue in itself. You know, being an educator and working in school, that's mandated. So, you know, I have to do, you know, as a state worker, I have to do what's mandated. But, you know what, public health is the key. And this virtual meeting, okay, right here, you know, it's, well, it's virtual for a reason, let's face it. But insofar as what has Meriden done, quite frankly, just from the outside looking in, I think Meriden has actually done a very good job, okay, with COVID. Being able to have testing, the amount of places that they had for testing was phenomenal. Where, you know, I came here where I could not get anywhere else, you know, for testing and for, you know, my COVID shot. So, great job.
All right, we did have a question that came in about jobs, I mentioned, job growth, I believe, is what they're trying to ask about. And what, we touched a little bit on economic development, but what can the city council do to encourage job growth in Meredith? And I believe that would go to Vanessa first.
Well, right now, if you've looked at TV lately, people are quitting their jobs at an alarming rate. There has to be a reason for that. You know, I think that if we offer certain incentives, you know, certain companies offer incentives for people to get back into the job force, that definitely would help. It would be, you know, job growth. And, you know, it's a community effort, okay? It's not just for the city council, it's for the entire community, church community, everybody in Meriden. So we just have to encourage more businesses to come here, okay, so that we can give them jobs.
And Dan, over to you.
Yeah, I mean, we're working really hard on that currently. We have tax incentives that we've, you know, introduced. Just recently, we had an incentive, if you are a manufacturing facility and you expand within Meriden, we'll give you eight years at a 20, at a reduction. I mean, that's so a local manufacturer can expand, which will increase jobs. I'm big, I'm a manufacturer myself. I work for Command Aerospace Corporation, an engineering, all good paying jobs, all the machinists, things of that nature, material handlers. You could go right down the list. Those are very good jobs that we need in the city. And that's what we're doing right now, as far as that. Of course, Research Parkway is always a key. It's an Area Three air place that we hope some of that expansion will take place. We already know of one manufacturer that certainly is going up there and it's local. And a lot of this was contingent upon our efforts to do everything we can to increase jobs in the city.
And with that, we're coming up on, so the forum was going to be about half an hour. So we're coming up on the half an hour from when we started. Dan, since you gave the first opening statement, Vanessa, we'll start with you for the closing statement.
Truly, you know, when my husband and I moved here, one thing I thought was that even though Meriden is a city, it really does have sort of like a small-town feel to it. And I noticed that everybody knows everybody who knows everybody. And I think that is utterly fantastic. It gave me the opportunity to meet certain people who have been here all of their lives, join different committees and boards. And, you know, I just love our committee and I like the fact that our residents love our community as well. Insofar as city council, you know what, I don't know all the answers right now. And that's why I'm looking to be elected. I don't know all the answers right now. And that's why I'm looking to be elected so that I can get a seat at the table and learn. I do have some good ideas. I would be accessible to our voters. And, and I, you know, will be very active on the council and vote it.
All right, Dan, your closing thoughts?
Yeah, first of all, you know, first and foremost, I really enjoy all the questions, concerns and complaints. They all greatly matter to me. I've gotten those on a regular basis throughout my terms. And I'll continue to serve in the best interests of you, the taxpayer. You can trust me to act as an agent of reason and a good steward of your tax dollars. As I have a proven track record of questioning unnecessary costs while still driving positive change. I'm proud of the economic growth in my district. It's experienced throughout the East Main Street corridor. The infrastructure improvements, we've had more street paving on the east side than I've in years. And drainage issues have overcome. Overall, my goal is to make Meriden a better place to live, work, learn and enjoy your life. I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you to the both of you for participating.
And we have to remind people to go out and vote on November 2nd.
Absolutely. Cassie Bowden, November 2nd.
And, you know, and I would like to thank you and the Record Journal for inviting me.
All right, guests, thanks to both of you for joining us tonight. And for everyone watching, we'll be back with more Meriden candidate forums in the coming days. Tomorrow, I believe we have the, like, what's the schedule?
Oh, the schedule is actually Area Four tomorrow at 5:00 PM here on Facebook Live. And then 6:00 PM, we have our mayoral forum. And at 7:00 PM, our at-large city council candidates. So we have three forums in a row. So stay tuned, grab some popcorn, bring a meal to its computer and absolutely enjoy.
All right, again, thanks, everyone. Be safe.
Thank you. Bye.